Citizens speak. And we're going to meet again on the 25th of September and we're going to have a hearing on signs and the St. Pius zoning proposal. Planned unit townhouse development. But we are going to have a public hearing on some other articles later on. Citizens speak. Are there any citizens who feel like they'd like to address the planning board? Well, we don't even have to say that.
Well, there's some people who want to talk, but they're not ready to.
All right.
They want to speak at those individual hours.
Okay, now we're going to have a special town meeting on the 27th of October. That's exciting. Now, we're going to have a presentation about a building in East Milton. Is that right? Do we have the people here?
Yes.
Okay. Come up and present. And introduce yourself. You should be aware that you're being televised live and recorded. So...
That's fine. All right, I'm Jean Falcone Schmidt. I'm owner or manager of Falcone Companies with my sisters and brother. And we have purchased the Milton Theater, which includes the three tenants out front. And this is about the facade improvements. We're trying to get the site approval for that. And I have some passouts or handouts. And then we also, Bill has the... Has the PowerPoint. So that's a little information about our company and then pictures on what we plan to do.
This, would you give this to Mrs. Ennis when she arrives? Thank you. Okay, continue.
All right, so the first picture we have here is what the exterior elevation will look like. You'll see our three tenants out front is Milton Barber, Salon Mateo, and B Boutique. And then as we go to... Oh, you don't have... All right, so the first one is showing... That's fine. Is the town existing sidewalks. There's a reverse pitch towards the building. Now, the town has asked us if we do any kind of site improvement or facade improvement, that we do the sidewalks. So we've agreed to do that. We've had the town engineer. We've had our engineers look at it. And Capone, who you guys use anyhow, look at it, price it out. We've hired him. And we will repair the sidewalks. So you'll see a couple of different pictures on the sidewalk. And you can see how it's heaving up on one side. In fact, I heard someone tripped on it today. Which I think is the spot on the next... This slide. Where it's really hazardous. Okay, so now we're going to go to the... See, the trees in this slide show that they're being choked. The other two trees further down have nothing around them. It's... You can't get a wheelchair by them, so...
The handicap grate, these keep wheelchairs on a solid surface.
Right, the metal grates do. And the other trees do not have them. Next one. This is showing the illegal entry into Salon Mateo. That's right, yeah. And so that's not handicapped accessible. Most of these next few slides will show that. Milton Barber Shop has a concrete ramp going up to it. That has to be repaired. And... Okay.
Can I go back to that one for one minute?
Yeah, you're going ahead.
That walk is going to come out. Right now, it's too steep a pitch. And what's going to happen is...
The door will go into the left.
This is the one to the right.
Yep.
The door is going to go in that flat spot on the left-hand side. The door that you see going straight ahead is going to go where the window is. So there'll be a new window going straight across in the center.
The windows will all be replaced. The windows and doors with energy-saving glass. Right now, they're only single pane. They feel the air coming through most of them. Nothing's been done. The previous landlord has not done anything for years. So what we're trying to do is give our tenants, who have been complaining, a little bit of help here. And improve it all. So what's the next one? This is just showing paling paint on the side of the building. So we're going to take the white brick, bring it back to natural brick, so it'll blend with the rest of the building. Because Stella's and Belvissage are all the brick. So that's going to happen there. This is rotten wood facade. A lot of that is just old age, plus also the sidewalk and the water going in towards the wood.
Presently, instead of the sidewalk pitching to the street, the sidewalk pitches in at the building. So it is actually...
Goes down, yeah.
Rotted out the sill on the front of this building.
Where it should be pitching towards the street.
Right, it's supposed to be pitching to the street.
Wood frames in the barber shop are completely rotted out. This is very typical of most of the storefronts. Bill blew it up. So this is strictly Phase One of the project, and it is just repairing, fixing sidewalks, fixing the entrance ways that are now will be handicapped accessible. There... You should have in the back of your plan, the different doors. The front of yours, okay. It's in the front of yours. And the red dotted lines are showing what is there now. The next page is showing what they will be. So you'll see, a few of them are being moved so that we can get handicapped accessibility into them. Is that Bill? All right. And this is just showing the kind of terrible bathroom downstairs in Milton Barber Shop. So we are giving them a new handicapped accessible bathroom upstairs, not downstairs. Go to the next slide. This is what they have to use for a bathroom right now. They have to go behind a curtain, step up to it, and sit on a little throne. So she is all excited about a new bathroom. I know people had concerns. Do you have the window transom one there? Might have gone by it. The window transoms, they will remain the same. They're just being replaced with new energy-saving models.
That's what I'm talking about.
That one, yeah. And then we've got two letters. I included those from all our tenants... For the two from the barber shop in B Boutique. I mean, the other one, Salon Mateo. Any concerns or any questions?
Well, it seems pretty straightforward. What you're going to do is prepare an application. And we will...
Building it? The permit application's already in, is that what you mean?
No, they've applied for building permit.
Yep.
Okay, but you have to... It seems to me that onsite plan approval, we have a hearing.
They intend to do that, but what they... They don't know what they want to do for the interior to the building.
I understand, but...
So in order to get the front facade...
On the exterior of the building...
This is the front, yes.
You get a site plan approval.
And they're looking to come back. They want to get pre-site plan approval. They want to start the work. They have no idea what they're going to put in the middle. All they're trying to do is replace the windows, doors, and fix the sidewalk before the weather gets bad.
Yeah, one more thing I really should say is...
So you're suggesting that this is work that doesn't require site plan approval?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
At least Mr. Park is suggesting you better suggest it.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And you just want to... You want to get started doing the work.
We want to get started, yes. We've owned it since July. We've told our tenants that we are going to give them a bathroom, fix their heat and air conditioning. Plus, one other concern, the engineer... Plus, the town engineer was there yesterday, John Thompson. In the top of the building, the bricks are starting to bow out a little. And we're kind of nervous if there's any kind of big snowfall this year, that they might bow a little further. We don't want anybody getting hit by bricks, so we'd like to get that repaired.
It seems to me repairs are different from site plan approval. But I think that what you've got to do in suggesting that this is... These are repairs, not site plan approval, is get us a description of what you're going to do. And, you know, be specific. And once we have that, at least we will know... You will be limited to doing what you put down that you're going to do. And does the board think this is a reasonable way of proceeding?
I guess my question would be, SK2, would that not be... I mean, it provides pretty much a lot... It provides a pretty good description of what they're looking to do on each elevation.
Yeah, all the plans have been submitted.
To the building department.
Yeah. My concern would be, depending on what the timing is of coming back again, I would hate to see this not happen before the winter, if we can make it happen before that.
Well, the sidewalk, it seems to me we need to... We need to know what they're going to do to the sidewalk.
That's already been approved by the town engineer and Capone.
Right, but you have plans, but I don't see that we have plans. Do we have plans?
Sidewalk is an issue that...
Has to be done.
Town should be doing, but it's not in the town's budget to do.
Right.
They're going to do it because right now, the sidewalk pitches and lets the water roll in.
Isn't it important to know what they're going to do?
Well, if they're... Are they replacing it with light kind? Is it just cement? You're not doing any design change? So I would assume we could put a condition in that it would be repaired in accordance with the DPW.
Do we have any specs for sidewalks, Bill?
Well, it's with the DPW, and they have to have a permit from the DPW to take up the sidewalk.
And the contractors...
Which becomes a separate...
Do they give a plan, like...
They will give a...
What they put back and does it meet... Doesn't... Don't we have, you know, bylaws, any specifications for the sidewalk?
This board does not. The DPW does.
Does, okay.
But we want to know where this building meets the sidewalk. In other words, where you're doing something with the barber shop to make it handicapped accessible. So we want to be sure that it is handicapped accessible.
Well, that's why we're working with Capone, because he is the town contractor who does their sidewalks.
Okay, but the entrance to the barber shop, the little ramp that you showed...
Their door's moving off to the side, so that one will not be there. That'll be replaced with windows. The door will be in where Salon Mateo is. And Salon Mateo's door will move over.
You're going to move some doors?
Yeah, that's shown on the SK ones.
Yeah. They have to for handicap, because right now, the barber shop's door opens up, opens in, which is illegal. So you have to get it opened up.
But you're going to...
And it can't open up to a sidewalk.
We need to have on file these plans, Bill, right?
We do.
Okay. That shows what they're going to do?
Yes.
With the kind of door?
Mm-hmm. SK2 does. SK1 is just...
It shows the doors to.
SK1 is just written over, though, so you can see the existing doors.
So you've got a storefront system.
We can get the particulars of the...
Sidewalk.
Okay, you get the particulars to the satisfaction of the planning director, who is going to ensure that we have complete plans of what you're going to do. Someone has plans.
I'll get the plans from the building department to put into this file.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. Is that reasonable? Shall we... We don't have to vote this, but we can say that we accept the concept.
Okay. I would make it...
You accept the concept? You accept the concept?
Well, I accept the concept with a condition. I would like the condition to be that the sidewalk needs to be in accordance with DPW standards, and the DPW has to verify the work. That would be my... That would be my condition to my acceptance of the plan.
Right. And...
And then I would be comfortable with it.
And Bill is required to ensure that this happens. We are not doing site plan approval, so we have no ability to enforce this. But if you don't do it and then come back for site plan approval...
They will be back for site plan approval on the middle...
That's fine.
The rear, of the theater.
Okay, so, yes.
Bill, who approves handicap?
DPW... Sorry, building department.
So he's going to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
They've met with him several times.
Okay.
Thank you.
What?
Yeah, they've been down quite a bit.
This is not... I mean, the public can comment, but it's not a public hearing because they're doing something that doesn't require site plan approval. They're affecting repairs. But... Yes, that's what you're doing. Good. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Now, at 6:49, we're going to have a public hearing on some zoning articles. And they've been duly advertised in the Milton Times. The selectmen are here to discuss the housing production plan with us. And these zoning articles are something else again. But if the selectmen appear in the middle of our public hearing, we may suspend it to... We may suspend it to accommodate the busy schedule of the selectmen. One thing about this public hearing that you should be aware of is that there are two articles. And one is signs in residence districts. And it has to do with the type of permanent signs and temporary signs, which are proposed for all the residence districts. And that has been advertised for a public hearing on the 25th. And the other... The other one is zoning called Planned Unit Townhouse Development, which would affect the St. Pius Rectory Site. And it has to do with development of condominiums on certain sites in the Residence District. And that also is going to be heard on the 25th. So tonight, we have an article having to do with what is a basement in a pre-1950 house? And currently, a basement is a first floor no more than four feet above the average grade surrounding the building. There are a number of houses built in Milton which have more than four feet. And it's clearly... The ground floor is clearly intended to be a basement. But these particular houses, which have walk-up first floors, have basement at first floors, which is more than four feet above the average grade around the house. And this has given the Board of Appeals a fair amount of work, giving variances, saying that in fact, we will treat the basement in these houses as a basement. And in order to alleviate this situation, we're proposing a change for these pre-1950 houses, that the first floor can be up to six feet above the average grade surrounding the building. And this should, in just about all cases, do the trick. And permit these homeowners to treat their basement as a basement when they go and talk to the building inspector. So who wants to be heard on that particular article? Introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's...
Be crisp and concise.
Ned Corcoran. I am an attorney with practice... I live here in Milton. I'm an attorney with a practice in Quincy, and I do a substantial amount of zoning and permitting work before this board and before the Board of Appeals. And the purpose of this bylaw provision really deals with pre-existing non-conforming... Many pre-existing non-conforming dwellings. Dwellings that were built at another time, taking into account the topography in town. We have a lot of neighborhoods that are built on hills and slopes. You can have a six... You can walk up six floors... Six steps into one house and walk out the back at the level of the grade behind you. And the converse is, you can step into a house and you can walk out and you can have a walkout basement in the rear. And many of these houses are two and a half stories on top of this unfinished basement. And anytime someone goes to modify the dwelling, they are required to get a variance because they're dealing with three and a half story houses and not two and a half story houses. And so the building commissioner rightly takes the position that these are not two and a half stories, that they're actually three and a half story. And it creates... It really creates a lot of work, a lot of cost, a lot of additional uncertainty for rather modest investments in modifications to dwellings. And so I think that this is an opportunity for the town to recognize the historic nature of the town in many of the older zoning districts, many of the older neighborhoods. Recognize them and give the opportunity for reinvestment in those without having to go all the way through the process of variance. And so I would strongly recommend that the board recommend favorably to town meeting a favorable vote.
Okay, who else wants to be heard on this particular article? Does the board have any questions? Does the board want to recommend to the town meeting that they pass this article?
So moved.
All right, I see a second. Any discussion?
Did... Where did the 1950 come up? Did that help determine the number of houses that would fall in or out?
It was sort of... It was my view that in 1950, about 1950, people began doing ranch houses.
So that wasn't a significant problem with that one?
So that's where it came from. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have a article on sign illumination. And I will say this, that we're not going to make a decision on this article tonight because of the fact that we're doing a sign article on the 25th. And it seems to me that people who want to testify about signs maybe think that that's the time they should show up. And... But still, even though we're going to give you a chance to testify on this article, again, on the 25th, we would be happy to hear any discussion that people have about this particular article. It really has to do with the illumination of signs and tries to... Tries to prevent the new technologies from creating a nuisance to people living in town. What with LED signs and the... All the technology available. We want something reasonable, but we don't want something that is avant-garde. But I'll let anyone else... I'll accept... I don't think that is a fully adequate summary, but it's what I got tonight. Try better next time. Who wants to be heard about signs tonight? You'll be able to hear about signs again if you like. You can't do residential signs tonight because that's not on the...
Do that one?
On the... We're doing those on the 25th. Didn't you read the newspaper?
Of course I did. I sent it in.
Of course not.
I did.
All right. We're going to do residence signs. It's going to be an interesting meeting. And I think that actually having this article under discussion at the same time will be somewhat useful, although this is directed largely at the business district, because that's where most of our illuminated signs are. All right, we'll go on to the next one. The next one is... Has to do with accessory buildings. Yeah, the height of accessory structures. And this is something that we've passed in the past. We passed it three years ago, but unfortunately, the printer created confusion with the number 20 and 21. And 20 got into... 21 got into the ad, 20 got into the warrant. And rather than try and straighten this out through other channels, we thought we'd just do it again. But it's been done once. And it... The idea is that if you have a retaining wall within your rear yard setback, which increases the grade of your yard, and then you put an accessory structure within the... How close can you get your accessory structure?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet? If your accessory structure and the retaining wall both are within 30 feet, then you count the height of the retaining wall as well as the height of the accessory structure in determining whether or not you've got less than 21 feet, which is the maximum under this article. And what happened provoking this was there was a landowner who built a retaining wall that was... It was 15 feet high. And then he wanted to put 21 additional feet of accessory structure on top of it. And that would have been taller than a house could have been. So we passed this to make clear that your total height, accessory structure and retaining wall can be no more than 21 feet. And it's been passed once, and town meeting liked it pretty good. And who wants to be heard on this?
Just to clarify, that's just within the 30 feet, right?
What?
Just within 30 feet, Alex, that it...
Within the 30 feet, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Right, Bill? Yeah?
30 and 30. 30 in the side, 30 in the back.
But it is... 30 is the... It's in that area. Okay. Anyone want to be heard? The board, any questions? It sounds like a good one to recommend to the town meeting. Okay?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Now... I think we missed one here. Oh, the first... Yeah, it's the first one. We missed the first one. But that's all right. We can go back. Now, this has to do with... This is very obscure language, which I'm not sure... I didn't really understand it, and I actually still don't really understand it. So I guess what we'll do, since I don't really understand it, we'll let Mr. Corcoran come up and explain exactly what this is.
And I will start this evening and then I'm going to request that the board reconsider, continue for further consideration to the 25th. I had hoped to be able to prepare some visuals to help understand this proposal. Unfortunately, I had a hearing of the Board of Appeals that went late last night and today blew up on me, so I didn't have a chance to do it. But the general premise behind this deals with the process by which pre-existing non-conforming buildings, dwellings may be modified by, by a landowner. So this town, large swaths of this town, pre-exits zoning. And you have lots of small lots in the Residence C District, you have small lots in the Residence B District, you have lots of beautiful old Victorians, Federals and others throughout the town, many of which would be illegal to build today because they are three stories, they're not set back, you know, an additional 15 feet from all lot lines. I mean, my next door neighbor is a magnificent Federal on 10,000 square feet. Couldn't build that today. It's the oldest, one of the oldest historic houses in, in Milton, it's magnificent. And across the street are three Victorians on 10,000 square feet, none of which could be built today because they're too big. The tragedy of that would be that you couldn't build my neighborhood again. And my neighborhood, I think, is one of the most attractive in town. And I think a lot of the smaller neighborhoods that are tight and compact and have large homes are beautiful homes. The issue comes to modernizing many of these dwellings for modern families. They have, many of them have small rooms, they might have had one or one and a half baths, small bedrooms, difficult for families, young families with growing, growing children to continue to live. And many want to modify, to extend, to maybe extend a kitchen, to add a bath, to add and whatnot. And because, but because they are pre-existing non-conforming, in order to be able to get permission to do that, they need variances. Like the six, the four foot and six foot floor issue, they need variances either from a side yard setback, a rear yard setback, a density issue, something because, or height issue where they propose to put a dormer within the existing roof, even though it's below the, the height of the existing ridge line, it's not going to increase the height of the, the height, you still need a variance. And so this, the purpose of this was to change the standard from a variance standard to a special permit. And the issue where it really is on the legal is variance versus special permit. With a variance, you have to show hardship associated with either the shape, the topography, or the soil conditions of the lot. There's nothing with respect to non, existing non-conformities in the dwelling that allows you to, that gives you justification for a variance. The Board of Appeals generally uses a fiction that if everybody else is on board and it seems to be okay and it's consistent with what was there, they'll go along with the variance. But it creates, it really creates difficult issues among neighbors. A special permit still requires the board to determine that there would be no detrimental effect of the improvement to the neighborhood and that it would be consistent with the intent of the bylaw. But you wouldn't have to prove, establish hardship for the sake of proving the variance. And I think it's, I think it, the current bylaw really thwarts investment and reinvestment in neighborhoods and a, and a change to allow the process to be softened to special permit. It still goes through the process of the neighborhood, it still goes through the process, you know, you have to get support. But it, it, you don't have to make the finding of a variance. And that's an easier standard and I think a more appropriate standard. The bylaw, the changes in the bylaw were really taken from a similar bylaw that was enacted some years ago by the City of Quincy. Mr. Prondak was actually employed by the City of Quincy at the time that the bylaw was, was enacted in Quincy, he drafted the bylaw, he, he understands, he gets overwhelmed. And I've got four hearings next Tuesday night on these types of issues before the Board of Appeals. I, there are others that are waiting to get heard, they can't get a date. It's difficult to get the volume of things before the Board of Appeals. And so I think it would lighten his load to a degree, it would make, it would encourage reinvestment in the town, it would generate new tax growth in the town, I think that's all positive. So based on all that, I would recommend approval. I can come back in two weeks and with some slides of some, with some properties that, that have these types of conditions. I've got a hearing next Tuesday on one on Russell Street where all of the houses on the street, except one, are pre-existing non-conforming. The last one is, is a colonial that was built across the street. It's the only house on the street that's out of character with the rest of the town, but it's the only one that was built within the last, you know, 30 or 50 years. And so it's completely out of character with the rest of its neighborhood. But it was built to conform with zoning. So in any event, I would, I would recommend an approval if the board would like to see some photographs and things, I'm happy to come back.
I think we do because what you say, how you describe it.
Eloquent as it is.
It sounds great. I mean, it does, I can't, I can't fight that. But I, you know, I, for the life of me, reading this, that's not what it, that's not what it says to me. It says to me that if you have a house like my house, my house is about 15 feet from Hillside Street, real close. And this says if I wanted to expand it, I could just go, keep going right down Hillside Street, 15 feet away from us, as of right.
No, not as of right.
At the size of the house. And then what is now a fairly narrow frontage on Hillside Street would be a big block of house within 15 feet of the street.
Well, let me comment on that. First of all, it's not as of right, it's by special permits.
But, but.
Second, second of all.
But this has, this has, the second sentence, right?
It says by second, I don't have the.
By striking the words in the second sentence of section four, the second says, "A valid pre-existing non-conforming single-family or mixed-family residential structure may be extended or altered as a matter of right within the existing footprint and height of the structure or within a height and setback which conform with the dimensional requirements of the Milton zoning bylaws." And all this does is, well, I mean, it, it, it does quite a lot in my view, but it does substitute certain words, "may be otherwise extended or altered," where such extension or alteration does not render the structure non-conforming with respect to other requirements in the Milton zoning bylaws.
Right, so, so my, so the intention was, as in the drafting was, as, as you described it, was to allow further, allow modifications so long as you don't, you don't create another non-conformity. So you could extend along the frontage, as long as you paid attention to the side yard setbacks. That's what you're allowed to do.
But it would, it would continue to violate, I, I mean, it could be a huge violation, you could have a little teeny violation, in other words, you could have a porch that sticks out into the frontage. And then you could just take your front line of the porch and extend the whole facade of the house along the frontage at the same distance. And that seems to me not to be good, good, that does damage to the frontage requirement. But if we made it into a special permit, I wouldn't mind that. But this doesn't do it.
Okay, then I would, I would have no, as the, as the proponent, I would have no problems if we changed the language to address it as a special permit.
Let's see if we can do that. Let's work on that for next time. That'll be a, something for the board to consider. And if probably, as of right, is probably, in other words, a special permit is probably falls within as of right because it's lesser. So it probably could be done by a, it probably wouldn't be outside the scope of the article.
Right. So I will, we will address that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now.
We're going to. Can we public comment on that for tonight while people are here?
Yeah, well, anyone else want to be heard on this? But we're going to do it again on the 25th. All right. And, and board, I think that we'll hold off on this one.
Agreed.
Next is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to appoint a master plan implementation committee for the purpose of reviewing the implementation plan within the town's master plan at least twice annually and recommend the Planning Board and Board of Selectmen the actions necessary to implement such plan, including timing, resources and responsibilities. And the master plan committee recommended this one. And we don't know what they'd be implementing yet, but by the time of town meeting, we would know. And so people then could make a reasoned determination of whether or not a committee to make sure that the plan wasn't ignored and forgotten. Whether or not to appoint such a committee, the, the town meeting could decide. And I, I think that since one of our most esteemed members, Emily Innis, has requested the board for this authority, for this committee to be created, and it does seem like a good idea, that this is something we should recommend to town meeting. And then if we look at the master plan and have different thoughts, we can, we can talk about that later on.
But we have the option as the board to endorse or not endorse the master plan. We get to vote, vote the final master plan in, so.
That's right.
To that extent, we can, we have a second bite at the apple here.
Right. But, but this would be, this would be a moderator-appointed committee. And I, I see, I think it sounds fine, but who wants to be heard on this? Well.
Is it, I'm just looking at, is it, it's just semantics, but is it an implementation committee or is it an implementation recommendation committee? I mean, they just.
Oh, they don't implement, they just recommend.
They just recommend that we.
Well, they recommend implementation. They don't have any power other than to recommend.
So they monitor things and recommend things.
Yes.
Well, they do what they do. They, yes, that's what they do.
I just, if someone was to read it, the title of it, they might think that this committee is the power to implement.
Yes, they might, but they don't. Okay, shall we?
One, one statement, you made a statement that the moderator appointed.
Yeah.
This authorizes the selectmen and the planning board to appoint the committee.
That's even better, isn't it?
[laughing]
That's really great.
[laughing] First line.
Okay. Well, given the fact that this is a planning board, selectmen-appointed committee, anyone want to be heard? Still no one wants to be heard. Okay. Shall we approve, recommend this to the town meeting?
So moved.
Okay.
Mr. Clark is referring to.
What?
That's the version in front of you.
Yeah. It's the, it's, no, it's the version, I just, I just didn't.
First line on, on number 13.
It does, it does indeed, it's what it says.
13, Bill?
Yeah, right there. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that we've, I think, what else do we have, Bill?
On the zoning.
That was it.
That was it?
Putd goes to the next meeting.
What?
The Putds go, the planned unit townhouses go to the next meeting.
And the signs and residence districts, but we may, we may, we're going to look at the agenda because of course we need to make sure that we don't languish while we wait for the rest of the selectmen to.
I've got one ready to go if you want.
Oh, okay. Let's, let's hear it. Which one is this?
333 Brushhill Road.
Sure enough, okay. Once again, Edward Corcoran, I am resident of Milton and attorney practicing zoning and permitting in town. And I have been retained by the trustees of the Mansions of Milton Condominium Trust, owner of the condominiums at 333 Brushhill Road. And an issue has arisen, this is a special, it was an amendment to the condominium special permit that was approved by this board in 2006 pursuant to which the board authorized the development of three additional units in accordance with plans and other materials that were presented to the board at the time. And the purpose of which was to really get at the need for additional revenue to get into capital improvements, capital maintenance and other things for the condominium. As a condition, the board imposed an obligation that was agreed to by the condominium trust that they would make a $40,000 payment to Milton Library. We understand that there's some need for that $40,000 for some work that could be done at the library. And so we, we are here, we're going to be filing to renew. And I just want to have a conversation about the right best thing to do. There is a provision in the town's bylaw that addresses the length of applicability of the special permit for condominium conversion. And that is subsection 15 of section 6L of the bylaw. And it says specifically that a special permit or amendment thereto granted under this subsection L shall lapse two years from the grant thereof unless such construction has commenced, or if no construction is required unless a master deed has been filed. Construction has not commenced, but the special permit did not require construction at any specific time within the four corners of the document. The condominium trust is negotiating a purchase and sale agreement with an interested buyer and with a closing to occur before the end of this calendar year because the, the condominium master deed was amended and was, the amendment was recorded. And it requires the completion or the transfer, the development rights to be transferred by the end of this calendar year. Buyer's counsel has received an initial opinion from the town building commissioner that the permit in his mind has lapsed because construction did not commence. He does not recognize the specific language with respect to the filing of a master deed. And we're kind of in a quandary because I can request a denial letter, I can make a formal application to him and request a denial letter and then appeal to the Board of Appeals. Or what I think is probably more appropriate is to refile, resubmit to renew the special permit before this board because this board is familiar with the matter, conducted public hearings on the matter, could, would conduct a new public hearing with respect to the matter. And I think it's the most time-effective, cost-effective approach.
With respect to the permit we've already issued.
Correct.
In other words, it'd be exactly the same permit.
Exactly the same permit. The, the conditions are substantially the same. To the extent that there is new information, we provide that new information as part of the filing. But things, conditions are substantially the same. You know, at the time, the permit was granted 2006. It's like a lot of other permits in town, you know, the economy went in the tank, things didn't happen. The economy's coming back, now there's interest, there's a live, there's a live purchaser here, ready to go, wants to acquire, but will not close on the execution of a purchase and sale agreement until the issue of, the applicability of this permit is resolved. And I think if we have a hearing at the end of October, well, we have time to get through the process to have the new special permit issued in time for the development transfer to occur, development of the rights to occur before the end of this calendar year in accordance with the amended master deed.
Okay, that sounds reasonable, I think. Ed.
Ned, pardon me, can you tell us where 333 Brushhill Road is?
Yeah, brush, I have an aerial, I did download.
It's Rushwood.
It's Rushwood, it's case. So it is the large estate at the northerly end of Brushhill Road, on the left-hand side as you come down. as you come down towards Truman Parkway. There are 14 units currently spread throughout the property. It's an 18-acre property, and there is, the bylaw provides for N minus one units, N being the number of acres, so you can get up to 17, allowed to get up to 17, three units. It would require, by the way, the special permit does, the permit that was issued does require site plan approval prior to the actual development of those additional units. So the planning board would have a specific obligation to review the plans for that development, but this special permit would simply authorize them to be developed. So I just, the purpose really is to introduce it, just to listen to any comment or concerns that you may have, and then we'll move forward as appropriate.
How many units exist there today?
14.
And the intent is to put three additional units?
Three more.
Well, I think that you should advertise it, and we should get on with it.
Okay. Is it visible to the screen?
Is the Board in agreement with that? We don't have to vote.
As I drive by it, Ed, there's fairly lush vegetation along both Brush Hill Road and Truman Parkway. I mean, I've never realized it was there. I've never realized it was there.
You can't say it from the screen.
All right, now we have two selectmen.
Thank you very much.
And this too.
Continue to wait for critical mass?
It's coming at eight.
What?
It's coming at eight. Of your master plan?
What? How is it? Master plan's coming at eight?
No, master plan can be done now. Dennis won't be until late.
Master plan's on now.
Can be. This isn't here yet.
Well, we have the master plan.
They're here.
Okay, now we're going to hear about the master plan. This is great.
So Emily, our chair, has asked me to introduce, if you don't mind, Alex?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Please.
I'm Brian Furze, I'm also a member of the Master Plan Committee. Emily Innis, who's the member of this planning board and chair of our Master Plan Committee, is unable to attend this evening, but she did ask me to introduce our great consultants, Daphne Plaitis and Brian Barber, who are going to come up and give us an update on the plan. Before they start, I just want to, you can come up, before they start, I want to remind everyone in the room, the Board, and anyone watching on television, that on September 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Milton High School, we will be having a discussion of the draft plan and the implementation of the plan. It'll be an opportunity to comment and participate in discussions on the plan and where it is today. I want to remind everyone on the Board level and also, again, watching on television and here in the room, that this is a draft that we're going to be talking about tonight. We are still looking for input as a committee. We'll be implementing this plan as part of the warrant to move it forward to Planning Board for approval. There will also be discussion about this on October 5th at Celebrate Milton. We'll have a booth where you can learn more about the plan. And again, we are trying to get our outreach as much as we can through September and October, so we'll be receiving input and modifying the plan right up until the very end throughout September and October. And, excuse me, yes, it is September 29th, not September 27th, yes, Emily and I had both had that date wrong. So it's September 29th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., Milton High School, and that will be a public meeting, and we hope as many people as possible can attend to learn more about the plan and give us as much input as we can get. So thank you, without further ado, I will hand you off to Daphne.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you for receiving us tonight. We're very excited to unveil our plan to you. As Brian said, it's in draft form, which means it's our best approximation of what we think is best, but it's your plan, so you need to tell us where you are in agreement, where you think things might be amiss, where they might need further explanation, and so that's what we're here to present to you. Before we begin, just wanted to step back for a moment, and if you wouldn't mind taking the broad view. The plan is in three volumes. Before that overwhelms you, if you turn to the second page, which is volumes two and three, our master plan is primarily based on two pillars. One is the public input. What do people, what is it that people want from their town? And that's all summarized in volume three. We have a compilation of all the public input and the materials we used at those meetings to stimulate the discussion. The other pillar of the master plan is an inventory and assessment of existing conditions. So the public input is what does the town want, and when I say the public, it also includes town officials, town staff, department heads. And then the inventory is what does the town have. So the plan, which is volume one, summarizes what people want and what the town has in terms of its existing resources, as well as identifies the number of trends that we need to be cognizant of, and puts forth a set of recommendations in terms of how to get from where you are to where you want to go, and that's the implementation plan. So the core of the plan is the implementation plan, and that is all in volume one. So volumes two and three are really appendices to the plan. So please don't be overwhelmed by volume three, which is 546 pages, and volume two, which is 231.
Which is why we gave them to, gave it to them digitally, so they don't have to print it all out.
Exactly.
That's why you have a data stick.
So volume one is the summary of all that, and then to show you what is the plan, what is the foundation of the plan upon which these recommendations are made. So what we wanted to do was to just briefly take you through it so that then it will help you to help us to make the plan more reflective of where you want to go.
Now, would the selectmen want to come up to the table to, to those selectmen who are here, just because it's probably are going to have to, they vote on this, don't they? They do indeed. So you'd better come up here, selectmen.
Well, but the planning board has to adopt the plan by statute. The Board does not have to, but it only makes it stronger if they do.
Right. Well, the selectmen have to appoint the committee to implement it.
And they also have, they're also identified throughout the plan as participants in implementation, so.
Now, Bill, I'm going to move down next to you. We're going to let Katie as the chairman of the town's chief executive officer.
Oh, stay here, Alex, I'm going to grab a chair over here. Thank you.
All right, now, I think that we're, this is, this is a better setup.
Yes, I agree. So, and one more thing before we move to the plan, I just wanted, I didn't want to get out earlier when you talked about the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but there is one important point about that, and that is that many of the items in the implementation plan have to go either before town meeting, therefore requiring town-wide conversation, and/or before other boards, before they are implemented. So the Implementation Committee doesn't just take this plan and move forward with the bulldozer. It's step by step, and each of the, each of the items have to be further discussed. So just to tell you that if there are small pieces of this plan that someone doesn't agree with, it doesn't mean that the Implementation Committee is just going to go forward with them if they are so appointed. Just an important clarification. So you each should have a copy of the plan, of volume one, and just wanted to take you a little bit through. The executive summary is very important in that that will be a separate, independent document that will receive the most distribution, the highest frequency. Most people, they read any of this, will read that. So it is important that you feel it is in good shape for the town to receive, and we will wait for your approval of it before we post it on the web for the town to receive. So if you see, the executive summary outlines the purpose of a plan, what a master plan is, and then the goals and objectives of this plan, which were derived primarily based on the public participation process and our assessment of the inventory of existing conditions. And it's, the process is explained, and then we get to page E8, which are the top key 20 recommendations of the plan. So this is important because some of these recommendations fulfill more than one goal, and they are really what the plan is organized around. They're discussed in far greater detail in the implementation plan, but here is, this is it. This is where the town will be going over the next 20 years, by moving forward on these top 20 items. So we've already had a couple of comments on some of the wording, and we welcome further comments.
Well, you think that we should really.
We should really focus.
We should tab these and make sure that if you read anything, you read these.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, that's what I'm trying to say. And then you will see that there are some concept maps where these are also summarized, and that's the end of the executive summary. So it's really quite brief, but it does try to capture most of the plan. Then again, the introduction goes into more detail about the history and the history of planning in Milton. Then we have the foundation, and it does, it summarizes what the guiding principles were, what the input was in terms of the key issues that the plan addresses. So we do hope that you read that as well. But if you don't, please then go to the implementation plan. So before going to that, go to the page that says Introduction to Implementation Plan, because that introduction is important to review in that it does summarize some of the implementation tools that the plan calls out. For example, the need for increasing implementation capacity, which include hiring additional staff, having additional committees and boards, and we specifically identify which those are, recruiting volunteers, obtaining funding, and also tweaking your existing tools and adding additional ones in your bylaws. So the Introduction to the Implementation Plan summarizes all that and then repeats the key, the key recommendations. And we have something else we call a list of ripe apples. Those are low-hanging fruit, low-cost, relatively easy-to-accomplish items that you might as well get going on if there is agreement. So we've started this list. If you can think of others, please let us know. We will be talking about this at the public meeting and hoping that the public will also add to the list. And some of these things require the public to be involved, and we just want, we want the momentum of the master planning process to continue and some faith to be built into the process. So these ripe apples are important to pick. And so we've begun that list. And then you'll see on Introduction to Implementation Plan, page 11, there is a key to the plan. And I know it's a little tricky because the page numbers are a little tricky at the moment. I'll wait.
If I had to put it back together again, I'd never be able to.
Keep that on, keep that on, keep that clip.
That's why it's in here now.
So the plan is organized around seven goals. Each of the goals have a series of objectives related to those goals, and then each of those have some strategies about how to achieve them. And then for those strategies, and I'll just take you to an example, we can go to, goal number one is preserve Milton's character. Objective 1.1 is preserve and enhance the natural features that comprise that character. So let's go to strategy 1.1.2. Develop a conservation strategy for preserving open space to be endorsed and implemented jointly by the Milton Land Conservation Trust and Milton Conservation Commission. We have listed existing resources that should be utilized and taken into account, and then some action steps under that strategy, as well as some possible funding, and then who should lead this action, and who should partner. And we've also identified a priority. So we have, the priorities are in terms of phasing. Priority number one is years one through five, and we start counting this January. So years one through five. Priority two are years five through 10, and priority three are 10 through 20. And things then have to be, of course, reevaluated because the further out we go, the less that we can predict circumstances. So we really would, in order for this to be most meaningful and most useful, we need to know from you whether we've got this right. And we can't pretend to know everything about Milton. So we may have got it wrong in terms even of who should lead this action, because each town is organized differently, and the jurisdiction of each board, committee, department is different. So you need to tell us, are the leads correct? Have we missed out some people who should be partnering in this action? What about priority? Are there too many priority number ones, or is there one that's listed as two that you think we should go forward with now because the political will is there, because it's more aligned with other things you're doing? So we want a critical eye on all of this. Now, as I said, there are seven goals, and each of them have objectives and strategies and action steps. If you feel that's just too much for you to look at carefully, just choose one goal. But if you do, please tell us that you did this goal and not the other, so we don't think, oh, then, you know, she's fine with all the rest. It's just that, well, in that particular case, you reviewed goal number one because that was most important to you, or that's as far as you got, or whatever the reason was. So we just would like to know that. The other thing about this is that goal number one doesn't yet have these, but in the other goals, you will see there are end notes which further explain and then sometimes give examples, in some cases give examples, of what we are recommending. So the end notes are often as important, if not more, than what's in the matrix. So please take a look at that as well. Here, this here, this reviewing the plan. The thing is that soon, pretty soon, in about two months, Brian and I will have to find other reasons to come and have dinner in Milton, because our role here will be done. So this is your plan, that you have to make sure that it's crafted at the end now in a way that's useful to you, in a way that is meaningful, in a way that you can move forward on. So we really would love you to take the time to take a careful look and give us your feedback. Now, the thing is, because we're going up to town meeting, we would like to post this for town meeting members to look at, for the public to get a chance to see before the public meeting. So if you don't mind, we'd like to ask that you look at this in two ways. You do, if you look on the second page here, it's explained. You do a brief scan by Friday, September 19th, where you go through and you say, oh, this, there's something that's really important that's missing, or there's something here that's worded in a way that I don't understand, or that creates a sensitivity, or whatever it is that you see that's important, and let us know by that Friday. And then the detailed comments by Friday, October 10th. And send the comments, please, to Emily and Bill. And here, we've also provided for you just for the context of what are the remaining tasks to be done. We have this public meeting that Brian has referred to, where we're going to be presenting the plan and asking people to help us with the prioritization, what do they think is most important, identifying the ripe apples, and also talk to them about what it is they like about the plan, what they don't like, what they think needs further explanation so that moving forward the plan can be better articulated, so that, because in order for it to be useful, people have to understand it and support it. So that's why that last meeting is very important, because that's when we get the last bit of understanding.
What's that date again?
The date again, it's September 29th, it's a Monday night. Please correct those calendars. We will be. We will be also having another forum at Fuller Village, the date is yet undetermined. We'll be at Celebrate Milton, we'll have a booth, we've already set that up. And then the final report will be submitted to you mid-November. And then the planning board votes to adopt the plan. The Board of Selectment doesn't, is not required to, but if they so choose and are inclined, it only makes it stronger as a tool. And then it's in place, it kind of, it gives you an opportunity to express to potential investors what it is you're interested in. It gives, it makes you more eligible for funding, and it just brings together the town around issues of progress, right? So you know when to move forward with what and why. So for example, the earlier discussions are providing a broader context, the ones that you were having here earlier, so people would know why those things are happening and how they fit into that overall vision and set of goals. So any questions or comments?
I guess after the, what we call the implementation committee really isn't going to per se implement anything.
No, they're not.
I think it's a good point to get up.
It is a very good point. So the implementation committee is charged with keeping the pages turning. We don't want this to stay closed. So they need to be looking up, thanks Brian, updating, see, you gotta keep the clip on. There's something glowing here. The, it needs to be updated periodically. They need to give a status of the master plan report to the town. So what has happened? And if it hasn't happened, why? Have there been any changes in the economy, in other conditions, that have made things different, that have made things change, or made change necessary? And so it keeps the plan alive. And they are not, they're not supervising anybody, they're kind of coordinating, and they're saying, oh, look, this is what's next on the list, you know, let's get going on it. But there are other people charged with implementing. And as I mentioned earlier, each step or many steps of the way will need further discussion, whether they need a vote at town meeting if there's zoning changes, or they just need to go before a board, such as the planning board, very often. So it's not as if just because it's in the plan, it's happening, right? It needs more fleshing out. This is setting the direction. This is a roadmap of ways of getting there. And you may veer, you know, you may need detours along the way, because you may have to, for a number of reasons.
So by the 19th, what do you want us to do? Just look at it and see if it...
If there are important...
If it gives us a good feeling?
Yes. And if there's anything important missing, we want to know about it, anything important inaccuracies, anything you think could be reworded in a better way.
How do these things get fixed up? I mean, it is all online, and I suppose you just tinker with it, or the implementation committees suggest...
Right.
Do the planning board changes, but the planning board would have to approve the changes.
Absolutely. And then in some cases, town meeting has to approve the changes.
Really?
If they, if they are to do with zoning.
What is town meeting going to, is town meeting going to approve this?
No, no.
Zoning, for example.
Oh.
Is there a number of recommendations and actions relating to zoning? And obviously prior to town meeting, action, you know, I mean, starting with the planning board to sponsor articles and have town meeting action on them. And there are some others that are in there that are fairly major kinds of actions. And that's what Daphne's talking about on this brief scan. If there's something in there that jumps right out at you, that either, we might be proposing something that the town has tried and it failed three times, you know, that's something, that's important information for how you, how you might recast it, or maybe you remove it, so.
And sometimes it's, the time is ripe now and it wasn't before, so, which is sometimes we're aware that something hasn't passed and we're reintroducing it because we feel that conditions have changed. But you need to agree.
And when is the public going to be given a crack at this?
The 29th of September.
And then, what, do they have any deadline?
They will, that evening, we hope to collect all of their input on that evening, but it will be online prior to that for their viewing pleasure.
Okay, so it'll probably go on within a week?
Yes.
Okay, so people should be ready.
That's right. And this is a pretty big deal. It really does happen about once in a generation, and Milton actually seems to live quite long because the last time it happened was 1974. So it is a pretty big deal, and it does set the course for the next 20 years. So people should care, even though it does seem like it's not a, it's not a burning, must-decide-by-tomorrow decision. These are decisions which affect everyday life coming down the road.
Now, maybe just because the public may read slow, but you could have little bullets about, about each section to sort of tempt them into reading, or tempt the board into, into reading what might be of most interest to them.
We actually have tried to do that. So in the implementation section, if you see, each goal starts with what we think is an invitation to read it, we hope. So there are, there's some description, there are some snippets about what the public has said to us, there's some key points that we've identified based on our data analysis that try to encapsulate the main ideas about why that's a goal, and that we try to invite people and inspire their interest.
And if you pull all those out, in other words, it's sort of buried now, but if you pull it out and put it on a, on some sort of a flyer, it might be a...
Not a bad idea.
Helpful thing to do.
And then the other thing that you should know is that the Tufts University, on my invitation and Bill's kind agreement to cooperate, is going to be focusing two of their classes on the town of Milton. Fall semester will be focused on improving East Milton Square, and the spring semester will be an urban design class focused on improving the civic core here, where all these public buildings are located, but it's not really a place, it's just a collection of buildings. So that's something to look forward to as well.
And this is the Tufts, Tufts undergraduates, Tufts?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so...
And I believe the, there are some graduates involved in...
Yeah.
Good.
So there should be some good ideas. Any other comments or questions?
Well, we have to, we probably will have them, but we can't, unless people are really, really speed readers. Do it tonight.
Wow.
So...
It's quite a tall order.
Thanks, Brian. You now get to...
Get to send them off?
You, too. Yes.
Thank you, Daphne. Thank you, Brian. And again, September 29th. Emily said I had to say it at least three times. September 29th, that's four. At the Milton High School from 7:00 to 9:00, we hope as many people that would like to be involved in the next generation of planning Milton will attend.
Thank you, Brian.
And look forward online.
Yes, and look forward online. How will people know when it's posted?
It'll be on the town of Milton website. Over on the left-hand side, on the quick links, is a line for master plan, it'll be there.
What day of the week is that, Brian?
Monday, Monday. It'll be there not tomorrow or the day after, but...
Tomorrow, Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, so start looking for it next week.
Well, the plan won't be up until we get feedback, but the site will be going, right?
Yes, the site is already going.
Right.
We're, we'll have the plan...
After our comment date, which is the 19th.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So enjoy your dinner now.
Now, let's see if I can find the attendance, see what else we have. What else do we have, Bill?
I think that's it. Reed Steel, can I go? Ninety Reed Steel, but they're here.
What?
Ninety Reed Steel.
But they're what?
Woman's glove. They're here. Scott's here.
Are they going to be here tonight?
He's here.
Oh, okay, come on up. You said he was missed?
No, 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 I'm waiting for Dennis, but again, 10 minutes, 7 minutes for Dennis.
Did you guys call while I was gone, when I left? I was in here.
No, no, no.
All right, good. Listen.
All right. For the record, Scott Henderson, Mackenzie Engineering Group, here. Informally, we had an issue with Lot 4, Mary Webster Lane. We went to apply for a building permit. We produced the building permit plot plan and were told that we had inadequate frontage, and thus the lot was not buildable. During the subdivision permitting process, I had sat down with Joe in the building department and walked through all four lots to ensure that they were all adequate. Lot 4 is sort of awkwardly shaped, this is at the end of the street, and has frontage mostly on the cul-de-sac. We asked for waivers on the roadway width and cul-de-sac diameter, both of which were granted. As such, it made sort of the configuration of frontage on that lot not typical, we'll say. So, long story short, we made a revision, what we determined to be a minor revision to the right-of-way layout along the frontage for Lot 4, and a subsequent adjustment to the property line between Lots 3 and 4, to ensure that both those lots have adequate frontage and area, making them both buildable. We circulated this plan, and to you, I think, Bill, you had this a while ago. These are the two changes that we've made. What's shown in red is the original right-of-way layout and lot line that was approved from the subdivision. What we've done is truncated the cul-de-sac radius here and brought it back to this corner of the lot. And what's driving a lot of this is this lot, the overall lot isn't rectangular for the subdivision, has this sort of fillet in the end. And so what happened was is the measurement from the lot line here to this point was not 75 feet. So what we've done is we've actually removed area from Lot 4, added it to the right-of-way. All of this area is already encumbered anyway by this drainage easement that will be maintained. And then subsequently, we made a minor adjustment to the lot line between Lot 3 and 4 to make sure that they both have enough area and also to maximize the Lot 3 building envelope, because that's the narrowest of the lot lots in the subdivision. So...
What is the change of area in the lot?
Lot 4, the change, I should have that number, but I don't offhand. It's in the 30 to 40 square foot range for both.
Because you, what you've done is you've, you've given a little bit of the lot next door to Lot 4...
Yes.
Because you've taken away the little piece of land that you need to add to the right-of-way.
To make it work, yes.
To get your 75 feet to the edge of the right-of-way.
Exactly. That exercise is also, we have a building footprint for Lot 4, an exact building footprint that's going to be built. So what we've done is we've minimized the building envelope to just fit that building, thus maximizing Lot 3, because Lot 3 is the last one to be developed. It's the last one that doesn't have a buyer and a target house.
And what did you just say?
So we have a building footprint for Lot 4, a final one. That, so Lot 1 is built, I don't know if you guys have seen the house there. Lot 2, they have a buyer who has, they're at like 95% design for their house. John Moore, the applicant, is going to be living in the house in Lot 4, and he has ordered his house and has, has everything ready for the building permit, hence the reason we applied for the building permit. So what we've done is to give Lot 3 the maximum building potential, that's why we shaped the lot line like that.
Because you don't know what they're going to do?
Yeah, we don't know what they're going to do. So we want to give them the most latitude, we'll call it, so. And that is, and always has been, the narrowest of the four lots in the subdivision, so.
Well, I think it sounds pretty minor. And if it's minor, we can endorse the plan again without going through another hearing and another round of advertisements.
I'd agree.
Just, I'm just curious, did you actually move that lot line...
Yes.
To get the 75 feet?
Yes.
Or to...
Well, it was...
Or to gain the area that you removed here?
A little of both. What we could have done is we could have taken this line and moved it down farther and had that 75 without moving this lot line. But at some point, we would have to take some area from Lot 3 that had excess above the 7,500 that's required to get enough for Lot 4.
Because Lot 4 was right on the line...
Yeah, it was just over 7,500 square feet.
This would have been under 7,500 if you didn't have the...
Uh, yeah, more or less, yes.
It didn't have the 75-foot straight-line frontage.
It always had, it always had the area.
I was just curious why, but it seems...
He's right that it always had the right area, but it just didn't have straight-line frontage.
Right, well, yeah, the answer to your question is...
Took into account the side lot line.
It's a combination, it's a combination of both, is the answer to your question. So, I mean, there's, there's many ways that you could align this to make...
Sure.
Both those work, so this is one of them. And if we had known this was going to be an issue, and this was my responsibility, so, if I had known this was going to be an issue, we would have done this during the subdivision permitting process.
Well, if we had, if we had spotted it, you would have too, so that's the way these things go sometimes.
Yeah, just oversight on my part, so. I have a full set of mylar's here.
I bet you do.
This may be a little presumptuous, but...
What they would like us to do is say this is an insubstantial modification, which in my view it is, and if the board is in agreement, we would then endorse the plan again, just so they can record something showing what the modified plan is. So what do you think? What do you think, Ed?
Well, as Mary Call, I voted against the project.
Oh, okay, so Mike, it's a...
However, however, if you need a signature tonight with Emily missing, I'll be glad to sign it.
Oh, okay.
Just make it unanimous.
What do you think, Mike?
I think it's rather insignificant.
It's what?
Insignificant.
Okay, I, let's...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Brian didn't vote on the original subdivision.
Okay, but we've got three people.
You've got your three, right? It could, I think, legally inquisitive. Even though Ed rejected the project originally, he can sign to, for the minor modification?
He can, yes, because he's just signing the modification. Well, I mean, he is sort of just signing the modification.
Doesn't Brian fit into that, too?
Let's all sign it.
I won't argue.
Okay.
Though I'd be up to a family.
Let's just, we'll go up and sign this thing.
You want all, I have every single sheet plotted with a new date, because that, during our...
That's when you did, right?
Yeah.
Every sheet?
Yeah.
How many sheets?
Eight of them.
Eight feet.
So 24 signatures.
Do you have a black pen?
I do not have a pencil.
I don't have a gun. I almost stamped the weapon when I left the office.
I have just a question. He will, he's on, he's not going to worry.
All right, let's hope these ones are better than the last time.
I guess it works the same way.
Oh. What's his name?
Scott.
Scott, what are the green tubes sticking out of the ground for?
They have, those are risers for, you know how we have those buyer-retention cells going down the subdivision? Those are the risers for the outlet control for those. So they put those in, and then they cut them to grade and put the outlets on them, or the grates on them, and they fill in around it, so. Thank you.
Brian has it.
We're gonna probably need another few... We're probably need another few of these, because they only seem to go far. All right. Ed, I guess you're up.
What, me next?
You're up. This is the exciting part about Bill. You're just in time.
Even with pens, right?
Because while people sign, we're going to have the town planners report.
Always ready for that.
You worry? You're hoping against hope.
Oh, yeah.
Go.
Okay. Issues that we've been dealing with, the zero central avenue issues, master plan issues, putting all this together. What else? The...
What is zero central avenue?
Zero central avenue is the Hendry's Project, working with the selectmen to...
Is the town on a piece of land?
To try to work on the...
It's the twos in the, right.
To work on the issues of if we do it as a special permit, what is the, if it's a forty B, what are the impacts back to the town? It's dealing with the intricacies that we have for how's it going to affect the town itself. There's been some issues with a couple of lawsuits dealing with town council and some past cases coming out of the planning board, so chasing nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and two, that's, that was fun for today. Several sign issues out there.
How did our zoning bylaws, did the Attorney General, I know he acted on at least one of them, she acted on at least one of them.
That's the only one that I have been notified of, and that is the landscape, the landscape article did pass. I know that, I've been working with Maggie Oldfield on, you know, she asked me to take a quick review of what they were thinking to put forth as a narrative, looking at it. Working on some issues with the rink, the rink is now open. I went to the warrant committee with your articles Tuesday night? Nights are getting wrapped together, Monday or Tuesday night?
Monday, I think.
Okay. Spent the evening with the warrant committee going over the articles, they came back with a few questions. Nothing, nothing earth-shattering over there. Working on the comments for the affordable, for the housing production plan. And that's about it.
Well, it's time to ask the Attorney General about those other articles.
The ninety-day period is up.
Is there a ninety days run?
Ninety days has run, yes.
Okay. Does that mean we get a constructive approval by the Attorney General?
I don't think so. They're not that easy, no.
Right. Okay, the, the one thirty-one Elliott, it looks like the...
Can I give you one more?
...what, yeah?
I'll give you one more. We've had the initial interviews for the assistant town planner, finals for that will be next week, we hope. We should have that person starting by the end of September.
Right.
Bill, who participated in the selection committee for that?
Chairman of the planning board, chairman of the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, assistant town administrator, and me.
You're down to a...
We're down to three.
Now, speaking of being down to three, Kevin Keating is going to be our real estate person on the, the...
Townhouse?
The condominium working group. And I was thinking that John Zickowitz would be a good person to ask to join us from the revitalization committee. So Brian and I think that that rounds out the group in a excellent...
Have our docket.
An excellent way, yes.
I have a simple question, did you talk to John? Did you talk to John?
We haven't talked to him, we're going to ask him.
Okay. But you've already talked to Kevin?
He didn't ask to be part of it.
Kevin has volunteered, so we are going to, we are going to say you are, this should be good.
Alex, did you officially speak to Cheryl Taggias?
Appreciate it.
I sent her an email.
Okay.
I sent her the email saying get in touch with Emily. Has Cheryl contacted you yet? All right, well, she is on notice.
I will take, as a co-chair, I will take the responsibility of...
I know that I got to get in touch with Emily.
I know that I have a email from Tim Kernan, who got appointed by the Prush Hill Road Neighborhood Association.
Bob Sweeney is going to do Indian Cliffs, and...
I didn't know these, so that's good.
And...
Tucker Smith is going to do...
And we're going to the Hillside Associations meeting on Monday, and I expect we'll have a, we'll have a DME then. So now, we're going to the housing production plan, and we are very fortunate to have the selectmen, the entire Board of Selectmen and the town administrator here. So, we're going to, we're going to give you some chairs. Do you have enough?
I think so. As the last one comes in, are you going to find somebody for East Milton?
We're blanking, yeah. Do you want to do it, Brian?
For East Milton?
Yeah.
We need to find somebody for, to represent East Milton. I'm looking at the list, and you've got everybody...
I don't live in East Milton, it's tough.
Mr. Duffy, do you have any suggestions?
For what?
The townhouse condo bylaw review.
I didn't see that, that East Milton was, I mean, you saw that list of people, I mean, it's fine, let's, let...
I want to make sure that you get a...
Someone from that area, okay.
Section, that's what I mean.
Let's think about that. No, you can't, because that, we'd have to post on the planning board every time we had a meeting, which would make it difficult.
We'll talk about it and come up with somebody.
We'll figure it out. Okay, welcome, selectmen, to, to the conference room, your home.
Thanks for having us tonight. I think we just need to call our meeting to order, so we'll call to order and we're all set to go, now that, now that we've got all of us here. And the town administrator. We don't go anywhere without her.
You may recall when we last met, we, we were given marching orders to get a housing production plan in place soon. And I've done some work on this. And I actually sent out a suggestion to the planning board, and I sent it out to Katie, but did it ever?
I think everyone got it.
Everyone got it, which had some text basically saying, you ought to, how, basically a comprehensive instrument isn't, isn't a bad planning tool if you've got, if it's, if it's implementing good planning. It can be, it can be extraordinarily useful. So I, what I did was that I, I did this page and a half of text, which I suggest we substitute for some material on page fifty-one. The, no, forty-eight and forty-nine of the plan. And substituted probably in the middle of, the middle of page forty-eight, beginning with the word "using."
So you want to keep the two paragraphs above it?
I, I think that's fine. I don't, I don't, and in fact, keeping the, the, the beginning of that, of paragraph three would probably be fine too. It just seems to me that when they get into determining some of the very specific things they've mentioned in the remainder, that that is not necessary. Then, I suggested a table. A table of, of uses, a table of units. And what Katie did was she said, well, what about the Fuller Trust? Because the Fuller Trust is going to produce forty-nine units this year, and that's going to meet our goal for the year, and why not say it? And I wasn't sure whether or not, I wasn't sure, I didn't do it because I wasn't sure. But then I did do it. And so I did a, a new table, which I'm going to pass out. And the table, the purpose of the table is to, is to, is to show that we're going to, we're going to produce forty-eight units a year, or that we could produce forty-eight units a year if all conditions were met. And if you look at the table that I just passed out, you'll see that we meet it in the first year with Fuller Village. In the second year, I suggest that if one thirty-one Elliott goes forward, that it could produce forty-four rental units. And I know that fifty-seven rental units have been, have been requested, but that's not necessarily the number that will be eventually awarded. And looking at it for myself, you know, with seventy parking spaces and that zero central avenue not being included, it seemed to me that parking and density issues would support forty-four units and make fifty-seven units somewhat, somewhat tight, or excessively tight, in fact. And then I suggest that five units be developed at the town farm in the existing buildings. Five rental units for a total of forty-nine. The third year is, third year is a bunch of things. The, the paper mill site seems to me could be forty-B housing, and I would suggest twenty-eight units, even though it's zoned, currently zoned for...
Eighty something.
What?
How many units, eighty?
What is the, the paper plant zoned for, Bill?
RC.
No, I mean, how many units?
Oh, eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine units. Well, I'm suggesting that we, we divide the, the push for conservation land. We divide, I mean, we provide for the conservation land, more conservation land, as well as some units, but twenty-eight as opposed to eighty is probably low.
Are you, Alex, are you suggesting favoring the swap?
I'm suggesting a swap, but having some housing there.
Right.
Having some housing on the other side of the track?
On the other side of the tracks, yeah.
On the roadside of the tracks?
Probably to just help maintain it, just because the DCR is not likely to spend any money.
So how are we going, how are we going to get housing? I thought it was not feasible to develop.
Well, they had a plan, and the plan was the same as they use on certain bridges, one-lane bridges. You have the light that goes red when you're going one way, and then it turns green, and you, it's, it's not impossible, but clearly they did not have got a lot of financing for that particular proposal. And it might have been because there was too much development there. But this, you know, twenty-eight could be thirty-eight, could be forty-eight. And if it were forty-eight, that would take care of the year, but in these numbers, I, I don't, I don't want to pile on any particular site and, you know, just overwhelm it. I mean, Milton Mews, for instance, two-hundred-and-eighty-four units on that site, that was ridiculous.
Two-seventy-six.
Still ridiculous. So, in any event, the, the paper mill site could be more than twenty-eight. I suggest that the Randolph Avenue land, for which there is a pending site plan approval, would probably, I, I look at it as a twenty-unit, a twenty-unit site. It's got, it's got wetlands issues, it's got access issues, it's, it's on a busy highway.
Alex, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So would the, would the forty-B proposal on Randolph Ave, would that not count towards this year?
Well, if it, you see, this is, this is a projection.
No, I understand.
And once, and then, the way they do it, the way they determine if you've met your goal is they count actual units. And if that were to be given a comprehensive permit, they would then count at that time, once the permit became final, and they would count those units. It doesn't have to be on the plan to count. The plan just simply is a way of saying, look, this is the way we could get there. It doesn't mean that we, we couldn't get there some other way.
Right, so we're saying this is what we're proposing for the site.
This is, this is, they say, show us that you can do it.
Yeah, now, that's the other question I had. We've, I guess this is showing that we can get to forty-nine units each year, it's not showing you get to ten percent. And is that critical?
But, but it's a five-year plan, they don't say we have to get to ten percent in five years, it simply said we have to make substantial progress in each of those five years.
Can you, can you carry, say you had forty-nine units from Fuller Village and you had seventy-two from Randolph Ave, can you carry over?
Not for the purpose of the one-year delay. It's, it's the units produced in the year, in the one specific year period, and beginning with the, I think with the first, first unit produced. In any event, it is, you count all the units produced in that year, and comp permit units are counted when the comp permit becomes final.
Could we confirm that with Karen, that the, the purpose of the plan is just to show progress towards, or the purpose of the plan is to show the plan to get to ten percent?
If you look at her table, you'll see that it doesn't get us to ten percent.
Well, yeah, it got us more than ten percent, but I mean, it certainly threw in things that weren't going to happen, I understand that, but, but I think it got us to like five hundred units, didn't it, all the? I think her table did.
She has four-hundred-and-eighty-two units, I thought we needed more than that. We need closer to six hundred.
It is essential progress, though.
Yeah, it is.
Essential progress by showing ten percent a year, you're obviously trying to get to ten percent eventually, but the goal of this...
Yeah, I guess that's my question.
You need five-hundred-and-twenty-nine units to get to ten percent.
Okay, so she's still short of it, okay.
And so the, the reason you're seeing this is ten, you're saying ten percent of what we need every year.
No, I understand that, yeah, yeah, I understand.
I mean, how far does the plan that she did go out relative, I think it's the same.
Five years.
So I mean, five-hundred-and-twenty-nine units, and do you suggest that we get to ten percent in less than five years?
No, that, my, my question... My question was, should the plan, I mean, this is production for the next five years, but should the plan indicate how you...
I think we do another one in five years.
No, it's, 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 this is a production plan. It's not a, "We've met our goal" plan.
All right, that's fine.
The National, you're not guaranteeing that it's going to happen.
Oh, no, 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 no. These are just ways that it could be done.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, some of, most of these sites have received expressions of interest about development. And like the Landoff Pleasant Street, it may easily be a conventional subdivision. This is the land that Frank O'Neill owns, the O'Neill Trust, the O'Neill family. And what they decide to do, they've, they've indicated they might, might do condos, and of course, they might do them under zoning if there were zoning, or they might do them under 40B. 40B can be used in many ways. As I point out, you could do a 40B under zoning. You could, you could, you could do a 40B which met all zoning requirements. The Landoff Pleasant, the Landoff Hillside Street, I suggest 16 units. The Landoff Brushhill Road near Fowl Meadow. Katie points out that this is a sensitive area. I think you probably could do 16 units there.
Probably, yeah.
But this doesn't, this, this is, we've made it clear that they, they have to, it has to be a good plan. That, it's just not anything. It's something that is good.
We need specifics, is what Karen told us.
What?
We need specifics. That's what Karen told us. Alex, right?
Well, these are specifics, but you know, we, describing exactly how a landscape architect and a engineer would design a particular project. I mean, this is specific. It, it gives a site, and it gives the units, a unit count, and I don't think the unit count is unreasonable.
Are you being, is it mostly four per acre?
What?
Is that the general density here throughout? Is it four per acre? Or is there a consistency to the number of units you're proposing for the size of the house?
It isn't, it isn't, it isn't tight because of wetlands and access and infrastructure and...
So it's actually even more thoughtful than that.
It isn't a tight 4.5, because that would, that would, that's probably not the way you should go about planning.
So it's even more thoughtful, is what you're saying.
I mean, a nice, a nice site, sure, with access, with infrastructure. I suggest that we, we include the park and ride lot for 35 rental units. That's not a lot. And have some commercial, you notice I say "commercial" and "residential" development there, and I, I think that's, that's a good way to go with that land over there. And using a comp permit is maybe, maybe just the right thing to do. Landoff Canton Avenue near Hemlock Drive, that's the Walcott Estate. I'm suggesting 16 units. You know, I, I mean, it's a big estate, but, and you could, you could put up a lot, but it seems to me that the neighborhood is such that a smaller development would be much more appealing and more better received. Because if these things don't get neighborhood support, they're not going to get built within the timeframe that we're, we're setting out. I mean, I make clear that if you go up against the neighbors and they're funded, the result will be, you'll be in your second five-year plan before you're going to count anything. I'm suggesting, as, as what I penned in here, the East Milton Theater for nine rental units. I understand that they want to do a restaurant, and if they do a restaurant, they certainly won't do nine rental units. But if they don't do a restaurant, and, and they have mentioned that, if they don't do a restaurant, they might do housing. So, once again, I'm suggesting that we, we put that in. Year five, I do an either-or. The town property off the Landville Access Road or the assisted living site, and I, once again, I, I don't propose an intensive development. I propose 28 units because I think this is something that the people would be in support Then we do other town land at various locations. And I think that ties into your town land table, Katie. Town land table. Do we have a town land table?
We don't have a table for it, Alex, but we have, we've got a list that Emily and I worked on a while back.
We could make that into, I mean, we could, we could, well, no, that, it can be just a text. You want to put it in at the end of, I mean, we could put it in at the end of this text.
Are you referring to the one that I sent you earlier? Is that, or do you just mean a general town-owned table?
Well, I, I mean, the town-owned table, the identification of the town-owned sites that might be used for affordable housing.
I think you've got, you've already got some of them built in, anyway.
Okay. All right, in any event, I, I'd just say other town-owned land at various locations. I don't specify what they are. Fraternal home redevelopment, fraternal hall redevelopment. There are two fraternal halls, I'm suggesting. One is the American Legion on Granite Avenue, and the other is the Knights of Columbus. And that would, with six, that would be 49. And there's no, there's no, these figures get us to 48 or 49 in each of the five years for which the plan is, is proposed. And that's what it's supposed to do. And it is no guarantee that these particular, these particular sites will be, in fact, used for comprehensive permit development, or that the density will be exactly what is suggested. But it does, it does suggest, I mean, what I've tried to suggest is that you don't need to come in with development that takes up every square inch of a, of a site under a comprehensive permit. I mean, if you can't finance it without doing that, maybe you shouldn't, maybe you shouldn't So, that's, that's what I suggest.
So a couple of things, Alex, because we mentioned it at our meeting last night, and obviously Emily is not here tonight at your meeting, but she had suggested to me that one approach might be to do two tables. Take Karen's table to start, which has the Milton Mews project in it, which has the other 40Bs that either have been talked about or have gotten a project eligibility letter, and keep that as just one table of pending or proposed 40B projects. And we could either drop in comments about explaining what they are, or just use Karen's table as it currently exists, and then create a second table that would have our goals. So that way, we're recognizing what's pending out there that might get counted at some point, and we're creating our own list of goals. I like, I like the approach you've taken.
I mean, are you going to, are you going to support what's pending?
No, that's why we wouldn't, that's why we would break it out into a separate table.
I mean, it's our plan. As Karen said, it's our plan, and if we don't support what's pending, we should say so.
No, I, I agree.
Or we, or we should just not say anything.
So let me finish, Alex. I, I agree with that. So I like the approach you've taken in this table, because it really incorporates a lot of, it's really just what our goals are. But we probably should still, maybe we don't put it in a table, maybe we just put it in paragraph form, but list what other projects are out there. Maybe we don't list the Mews project because we think that that's not going forward.
We'd have to say the Mews has fallen apart.
We'd have to explain it, that some of the houses are up for sale.
But we have two, there would be two site plan letters out there, and no, no, other than, there would be 131 Elliott and Randolph Ave., and Mews.
Yes.
And is there another site plan letter out there, Bill? I don't think so.
No, just those three.
No, I mean, that would be it, because the talk of other projects, I mean, like Hillside Street is just talk. Walcott Estate is just talk.
Right. But I think we'd...
I mean, John has made some suggestions as to what might go into the back of Walcott Estate, but that doesn't seem reasonable to him.
No, I'm talking just about those three, really, that the Mews, the 131 Elliott, and the Randolph Ave., because those are in Karen's draft. So we probably should at least, even if it's a footnote, we should probably acknowledge that there are other potential projects that are not our goals, that we don't put them in the table of goals, but we probably want to put that they're out there. So we're acknowledging that there's some other potentials, ones that are out there. I think that would actually help us to list it, because it shows the reviewing agency, who gets this plan to look at and has three months to act on it, that there's other projects.
And I get you, I get you right. You could say that while the town doesn't necessarily support these, they are projects that have been proposed, something to that effect.
The only, it seems to me, the only thing that she has in her list that Alex doesn't have is the Milton Mews.
Well, I do have...
And different numbers of units.
She's, yeah, different numbers of units, yeah.
I do have Milton Mews. I've just produced, I've just produced the town.
Yeah, they have all the same towns. The numbers are just a lot lower.
What other projects are you suggesting that we put? Did Alex, she...
No, just what's been proposed.
But there's different proposals, so the numbers would change.
We could do a footnote as to what's out there.
You could footnote, Mike, you could footnote of 131 Elliott Street, saying, "We were planning for 44." You put a footnote that basically says it's a current proposal for 57, the town...
Or the town supports, you know, the town supports 44, the polls are up here for 57.
I'm just bringing that to the table, because Emily's not here tonight, and that was her suggestion.
Well, why don't we do it just in a, I mean, in a footnote? Because it isn't really, we're not, we're absolutely adamantly opposed to the Mews.
But this, this, again, like you said, the person who put together the housing production plan made a point that you reiterated a minute ago, and that is, this is our plan.
Well, that's what she said. She said, "Put in what you want, because it's your plan after all."
It's our town, it's our plan, and if we think a site is good for 44 units, then I think that's what we should carry in here. I mean, to say that we're going to put a note that says it's potential for 57, that's not our plan.
Wait, say the developer.
It's not our plan. We're on record opposing it, but at the same time, it's before the Board of Appeals, so I think we want to recognize the existence of things that have gotten a site eligibility letter and that are currently pending.
But, but again, like the, the housing production plan, like the master plan, this is, this is an intent. It's not a, it's not written in stone, and it seems to me almost, I don't know, I can't think of a better word than silly to say that our plan believes that we could put 44 units here, but somebody wants to put 57, but we oppose it.
No, it would, it would be basically, it wouldn't be part of the table. It would be a...
But what is the point of making a note saying you could potentially put 57 units here, but the people that put this together, this housing production plan...
Because Emily thinks it's a good idea.
Well, I guess I'm saying I love it is a good idea.
We want her, we want her vote.
It's like saying, "Here's my book that I wrote, and I'm going to tell you something that I don't really agree with."
The plan has to be approved by the state as well, and it gives the plan another level of credibility, where you're saying, "We're saying 44. Here's why we're saying 44."
Right.
It might, there might be a plan for 57, but we don't like that plan. We like the plan for 44.
I think it might be enough to say that this is a, this is a, this is a conservative estimation of potential.
Well, no, this is a realistic estimation, Mike.
Specifically saying somebody wanted 57 units, where we believe there only should be 44.
It's a realistic estimation.
Alex, I have another question. In your text, you talk about, you know, that no less density than the zoning would allow, which means potentially more density, but in any event, it seems like no more than 4.5 units per acre. But then, when you go to the table, there's certainly a lot of these properties in here that are considerably larger than four, or more dense than, so, I mean, number one, the table's inconsistent with what it says.
Yeah, I think that's right. So with, that's got to be changed. The, the text has to be changed.
Yes, yeah.
That's easy enough.
And, and I think, I think 4.5 units...
It could be, it could be, it could be a general, a general standard, if something...
Maybe you strengthen the second sentence that talks about cause for greater density, or build it into that. The following paragraph talks about a preference for rental...
Yeah.
...which is different than the 80-20 split. It's a little bit softer. I like it that it's just a preference, because obviously, a lot of these, we're making five-year projections, so the further out you get, the harder it is to project any of this. But I liked your approach, Alex, of suggesting it as a preference, rather than, I don't, I guess that's a question, do we still need to vote on an 80-20 split? That's referenced elsewhere in the housing production plan.
There's nothing, there's nothing to require that in the regulations.
No, but the plan references it in a few different places.
Oh.
So the question is, but that's a decision we have to make. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Suffering not to preference again.
Yeah. No.
Yeah, as much as I understand the reason for it, it's probably unlikely that Milton's ever going to develop 80-20 rental to homeownership, but...
Well, homeownership is getting 500 homeownership units when you can't count the market units. You can only count the affordable.
Right, yeah. So obviously, I understand the reasoning, yes. Yeah, and, and, you know, all of the rental units count, so.
No, I, I mean, homeownership is probably a better housing model for Milton, but rental housing...
It certainly needs some rent.
Rental housing is definitely needed.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Isn't the, isn't your, I know, just because I backtrack and read it, isn't the 4.5 units per acre a minimal? Isn't that what you're...
No, it sounds like it's a, in no event more than, the way I read it.
No, no, it says, it's included in the sentence that says, "Should have a density no less than..."
No less than zoning, yeah.
The miss, should have a density no less than the density permitted by the zoning, in particular residence district in which the development site lies, or a density of 4.5 units per acre. So that's what it is.
But if, no, it's... Yeah, it's sort of, it's sort of...
It says, it says, it says a density no less than X or Y.
It does. It puts a top, it puts a top on it while making it an or. I mean, it, it sort of says it can be between these two, and it shouldn't be allowed to go, it shouldn't be allowed to go above that.
So that might need to be...
You're the lawyer, but I think it reads differently, but...
Well, it's going to read differently.
No, another question is, year, I guess it's knowing it's year three, we have the, the paper mill site. I think at the last meeting with Karen, we talked about putting that in one of the out years, because there are, there are environmental remediation requirements up at that site, and I, I think we, I guess back it up a little bit. And one question that, something that Emily brought up at the last meeting was, should we put in text explaining what some of these projects are? You know, if, if the state that's reviewing this just sees this list, will, will some of this raise questions for them? What is this property? Why is it in a given year?
Well, I guess if we're talking about the paper mill, if we're talking the other side of the tracks, we, well, we don't control it, but that is privately owned land that is, we have an overlay zoning for that.
We do.
That's the reason we talked about listing this, because maybe the overlay zoning.
Fairly dense overlay zoning, which, I mean, this is, once again, this is sort of the mixed use concept.
Yeah. I think it would be improper to talk about the, the land in front of the tracks, because, you know, it's DCR land, it's conservation land.
The overlay doesn't apply there.
Right.
But, again, this is privately owned land, and we did say before we listed any privately owned land in here, we would talk with the owners.
But it is a motivated development.
It's a discussion of a swap.
They've indicated they want a development. All these parcels, there have been indications that, about development, about condos...
That's true.
About development outside of zoning.
Or sale.
Or sale.
The question, Katie, your question about whether or not we should put text in, that's a question that seems like it should go to the consultant.
There you go.
I agree.
Because I don't, I don't know that, if, if no one else does it, I wouldn't want to spend any time putting text to these.
In the, in the fact that she put this plan together, and it seems to be, and it's not two pages, it's fairly significant, it's, you know, there's a volume to this, and she didn't seem to have, feel a need at this point.
No, but again...
So it says to me that she made not necessarily...
No, I agree, but keep in mind, the ones she put in are all, have all gone to the state and gotten project eligibility letters, except for the Ford Ranch Road, but the other three have. So there's probably familiarity with them. So that's a question I think we should ask her. Bill, have any of these comments gone over to Karen yet? Any of, even the text changes or any, nothing?
No, yeah.
He knows that that list was probably, and it was just a list of, like, these factors that had to fall around. That's who she put it in, because she wants you to...
Yeah, this is a...
Alex did a great job.
I agree.
I agree, he's done a great job.
I think she was creating a template for us to come up with this list.
I don't have a problem with that.
No. I think it's, I think Alex did a great job. I just think we need to go through and make sure we're all comfortable with the years that these are in and the descriptions of them.
See, if the ground field are in the water, I'm going to be in, not on the property to watch.
Yes.
Again, I think... Again, I think, you know, like the master plan, I think it's, in the other, as I was saying, it's a roadmap. I mean, maybe some of the projects here will change. Maybe something in the third year will go to the fourth year. Maybe something in the fourth year will come to the second year.
That's right.
It's hard to--
We did talk--
Exact.
No, exact.
I like to say, like to--
Agree.
Underpromise and overdeliver.
And the Paper Mill site's actually, the Paper Mill site's actually owned by a private owner, whereas Granite Avenue's owned by the state. I, I would prefer to see Granite Avenue further out than, you know, that would be one you could potentially propose switching with the Paper Mill site. But with it being state-owned, I'd much rather see the Granite Ave site be further out by the time you get that land under control than it be.
We also talked, Alex, about putting tax title up in some of the earlier years because there is a property currently that the treasurer is going through tax title process on that would be very ripe for affordable housing.
I have no problem with doing that. But it's, it's, once again, you've just juggled the figures a little better. I mean, putting some tax titles in at the beginning is great. And if you can, you know, if you can add an address, that's even greater.
But essentially, the address, but that one, the treasurer is coming in, Smith Road, the treasurer is coming in to meet with us and has already suggested that that would be a property that we should probably be looking at to see if there's anything that we can do at that location since it's a former church rectory or a school. So it's a, it's a fairly large structure.
We could do it in year two.
Year two.
That's under other, basically, other town land?
Well, just say two tax titles.
But that, that's the category that you have that would cover that site.
Well, that would be year five.
What I said, town tax title properties at various locations.
Right.
Yeah, that's in there. That's in the history, right? Yeah, you have to write.
Emily is, Doug Rayford on, on Emily Barton, on getting these tables. I think, change it, go around.
Habitat for Humanity might help you with this, and quote Dr. Sutcliffe. You might mention more of it.
With what property?
Habitat, Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat is mentioned in the text, some by units.
But we can have a, we can put a few Habitat units in.
Spend both of my free air.
We can put them in anywhere. I'll just, I'll just make a note, Habitat units. I think that would be a good thing. I mean, we can't identify exactly where they're going to be because Habitat doesn't have the land yet.
Yeah, and the plan talks about Habitat being infill, you know.
And I think that there is the, there's something else, actually, that Karen mentioned that I thought we could bring into this.
Alex, this is probably a very silly question, but let me ask it anyway. You've made these, you know, year one she had is 2015. You've got year one, 2013 to 2014. And I'm just curious as to whether--
I, no, I meant it to be 2014 to 2015.
I just push everything back.
Okay, so we can, all right. Because I'm just thinking that if we listed--
I meant it to start when they get approved.
All right, because if we listed the four units under that, I would think that might raise an issue.
That's just a mistake.
Okay. We'll fix that.
A typo.
Do we, do we know for certain that the fully, I mean, that was still a question, I guess, whether those fully units are going to count, aren't going to count. Has that confirmed?
What we're doing is, we have been told that they're going to count, and--
Taking them at his word and putting it on it.
They're, and, you know, if, we can always change the, the plan.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. We've been told that they're going to count, so I agree.
Now, what about the inclusionary zoning? Has Karen sent us a draft revision for that section? Bill, do you know?
Inclusionary zonings?
We asked her to add that last week.
Oh, I thought that we, I sort of thought that we, well, let's just take what's in the master plan and take advantage.
I haven't seen the master plan yet.
Isn't there something about inclusionary zoning in the master plan?
Probably in the tables and general side.
I think that there are huge problems with inclusionary zoning of the sort that isn't incentive zoning. And even Karen said, "You've got to provide a bonus if you're going to force them to pay money to create affordable housing." And that's what we've been, we consistently do in all our special permits. It's just a question of whether or not there's a way we can require a subdivision developer who is operating under the subdivision control law, state law, to do this.
Certainly, you haven't paid money to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Didn't we task Karen, though, last week with drafting and some additional language regarding this?
I didn't think we got to actually asking. We discussed it, and then we left it on the table.
I think we did.
What?
The inclusionary zoning is in your report. She had forgotten that. It is in there.
Okay, see, it's, it's already in there.
It's in there, but I, all right. So what I was expecting that we were going to have for tonight was some revisions that our comments would have gone to Karen and that they'd be back. So if we're going to vote this on the 25th, we really need to make sure that within the next week we get a revision back that incorporates people's comments, whatever changes Karen might want to make for inclusionary zoning. I know it's in there, but I thought she was going to be making some changes based on the comments that came out of the last meeting. Because we need to see a revised draft a week or so before we have the next meeting on the 25th.
I think that if we revise the table, we're, we're there. And when we can add whatever in the, in the additional text.
Other people may have comments. I mean, I made a lot of comments on the text throughout the report because there's, there's some information here that's inaccurate about Fuller Village and MRE that we just need to correct that's just factually wrong. So those comments should at least go over to Karen sooner rather than later, Bill.
And anyone who, who does come up with a issue, I mean, it's, it's, this is stuff, a lot of which is taken from the Affordable Housing Plan, which was reviewed in some significant detail before it was, before it was adopted.
I think you make a good point. I think a final draft that's going to be voted on should be sent out a week ahead of time.
Yes.
That should be identified as such. This is the final draft you'll be voting on.
Yeah, exactly. Makes it easy for everybody.
But should Katie and I--
You haven't seen this exactly before, but this was going to be voted on.
Should Katie and I be formed into a joint commission to make sure that the comments get over to Karen and that we have a final draft that's ready for a vote? And that we get it out to the people before, beforehand?
Sounds fine to me.
25th, this, one morning, vote this.
Well, you have a meeting scheduled on the 25th, and we were hoping to come to it and have another discussion about this and ideally vote it that night.
We really do want to vote it that night if we possibly can. So people should take a look at this. I think that if we get this table right, and we can have it, we'll have a footnote about what's out there pending, that we're, we're basically there.
Personally, I don't think I have a problem with the table. The table seems okay.
No, I think the table is a great effort, and it looks good. And the text also is, is very good.
Looks pretty good. And as, and, and you know, as Karen says, it's our plan. If there are changes that people want to make in the plan, write them down, and we'll get them made.
Did you, did you say you made some comments, Katie? Did you email those?
Well, because of the open meeting law, I only sent them to Bill and to Alex. But that's why I was hoping everyone who sent comments would get them to Bill. Bill would get them to Karen. Then Karen can circulate a draft that we all can look at that would just have a combined new version that everyone's comments in it.
But Bill could circulate the draft.
Can you say by the 19th, which is the same date as we're supposed to review the--
Nine thousand pages.
The nine thousand pages. It's pretty important, just so we have a consistent date.
All right, well, this is, this is good for Evelyn Wood.
So it's at some point, around about the 19th, Bill, you'll send out an email and say, "Here's your final draft of the housing production plan for review for vote."
And the master plan. There you go. Vote.
This is good, Bill.
It's like the Three Stooges, you're going to have to put the other two. Can I pass it to them?
Are we done? I think we're done.
I think so.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're done, I think.
You're good. Thank you, Alex.
Good job, Alex.
Do you guys want to adjourn, and then we'll adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Both meetings are adjourned.